I'm going to call to order the Norton Select Board meeting for March 2nd, 2023. It is 7:03 PM and Select Board members Snyder, Hornsby, and Rich are here. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the Chair of the Committee of the Select Board, Meg Arts, is not here currently, but hopefully will be joining us remotely. She's on the road tonight. So as you know, I'd love to mention that tonight I will be the Chair pro tem. Makes it sound more official. And the first thing I wanted to do tonight, and I know Meg was disappointed that she might miss this because of her other commitment tonight, but the first thing I wanted to do was welcome Alec Rich III to the Select Board after his recent win in the special election. So, welcome Alec.
Thank you.
Very happy to have you here. And I think safe to say we're all looking forward to working with you and welcome. Do you want to, do you have anything you want to say?
Just want to thank, thank everybody again for having entrusted me, as well as the poll workers, Lucia and all the volunteers, and looking forward to it. Thanks again.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, so we'll, we'll jump right into the agenda. We only have one appointment. Actually, we can, we can add, do you want to add Paul to us?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do that. So, so we have two appointments, resignations, retirements tonight. The first is the resignation of Jennifer Warner from the Recreation Commission. I believe Jennifer is moving to, moving out of town. So she has resigned from the Recreation Commission.
Yeah, I'm sure I can speak to that. She, she's actually a family friend and she didn't want to have to resign, but she unfortunately had to move out of town and I helped her move.
Is your back all right? Everything okay?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, so that's, so we'll have a position available.
We have at least four, so if anyone wants to be on the Recreation Commission, we could use the help.
But there's still four.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so obviously if you're interested in the Recreation Commission, you can reach out to some of Mr. Units or you can reach out to the Rec Director. And then, not on the agenda, but we'll mention it as well, Paul Schleicher Sr. has been appointed by the Moderator to, to the Finance Committee.
That, that's, I believe that's on the agenda later on.
Is it on later on?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there it is. All right, well, we're skipping ahead. So, next word.
Can I speak something to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, you know, against, against the Select Board's overall recommendation, he made the appointment. And I think, I personally made it very clear that I was going to, I'm going to dispute this, but, you know, looking at it, I don't think it's worth the town's time and money to dispute it, so, so that's the reason I'm not going to dispute it at this time.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Okay. All right, great. So, next up is approval of the minutes. So if nobody has any amendments or changes to the, to the minutes, I'll take a motion to, to approve the minutes for the dates listed in the agenda.
Do we need to approve the executive one separately, Mike?
Yes.
So I'll motion to approve the minutes from May 11th, 2022, excuse me, and February 9th, 2023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So, I guess still not here, right? Okay. So we'll just take a vote on approval of the minutes for May 11th and February 9th, May 11th, 2022, and February 9th, 2023. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously.
Okay, so I'll move to approve the February 9th Executive Session Minutes.
Okay, so these, so do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And then these require a roll call though, because they're Executive Session Minutes. So, help?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I too am the yes, so that passes unanimously as well. Yep, thanks. Mike, do we have anything under licenses and permits other than what we're going to handle at the public session?
Great.
Okay, that's it. And then, I feel like we're going too fast. Should I slow down?
No.
Okay, all right.
Good.
So announcements, we just mentioned Paul Schleicher has been nominated or appointed to the Finance Committee. And we have, skip that for now. Yeah, so we wanted to mention a couple of things, even though, again, not specifically listed, but a couple of announcements. One is just a reminder to everyone that we have an election coming up, the annual town, town election on April 29th, 2023. It's a Saturday. The polls will be open at the middle school between the hours of 8:00 AM and 3:00 PM. If you would like to vote absentee or vote through mail-in, you can do that. Best advice I can give is to contact Lucia Longhurst at the Clerk's Office and she can walk you through the process. It's pretty easy. And then, we do have some interest in some of the, some of the elected positions, but we could always use more interest. So, we can, we can talk a little bit about whether or not the, I was just thinking like whether we should post those positions. Do we usually post those anywhere? Like, because I've been doing it on Facebook, like just putting out there what's, what's available.
They're posted on the town website.
Town website. Yeah. So you can go to the town website to see what's available. You can also reach out to Lucia to see who's already pulled nomination papers. You can get all that information. It's all public information. So, so, yeah, please, please do so. The deadline for pulling papers is March 9th at 5:00 PM, which means you can obtain the nomination papers from the town clerk all the way up until March 9th at 5:00 PM. And then you have to return the papers with, with signatures by, where is this town? March 27th?
24th.
March 24th at 5:00 PM. And again, reach out to Lucia and she'll walk you through that process if you're interested. Any other, guys have any other announcements?
No, just if anybody's considering running for any position, please do it. There's several open for the Planning Board, I think three. The Board of Assessors, I think, as well.
Two.
Two. And that, I think there's only one person that's pulled papers for Planning Board so far. Nobody for the assessors, I don't think. And, yeah, so please, you know.
Every position is important.
Absolutely.
And I know there's a lot of hesitation out there from people thinking, well, I'm not qualified, or I don't know what the job is. You can always reach out to the Chairs of any of the committees. You can reach out to any one of us, I'm sure that's fine. If you would like some help, or reach out to Mike, or anybody, if you have any questions about, about, you know, what, what these positions are and what they do. And I would just say, you know, you know, there are no, you know, most of the positions are, you just have to run. And, you know, if it's, if you feel it's something you can do to help the town, then we, we all encourage you to do that. So, yeah, so we have two, two Board of Assessors positions, Housing Authority position. We have two Planning Board positions, is that right?
I think there's three. There's, there's two.
Oh, there's two, right.
There's certain terms.
Yep. So there's two for a three-year term, and then there's one for, for an interrupted term of two years. The Town Moderator, there is a School Committee position available, and then also for our election, and the Water Service Commissioner. So, so, yeah, so encouraging everybody to do that if they are interested. And we have three minutes before we can start the public session. Yeah, if you want to just start the Town Manager's Report and then we'll go back.
So, just a few things to report. We have signed on to the National Opioid Settlement with CBS, Walgreens, and Walmart. So the town will be receiving, as part of the agreement with Walmart, $112,783.84. CBS, $199,164.62. And Walgreens, $216,570.67. And not part of these, but the previous lawsuit with the manufacturers were, to date, would receive $200,000. The money's sitting there. We'll have to have an article in October when it becomes certified as free cash. We're on the phone with Opt and the Revenue last week, James and myself, and they're not budgeting their, because we can only spend the money on opioid-related things. And, but still, they won't let us set up an account. You have to wait, and so.
Right, you have to like wait for reimbursement, right? So it's there, but it's not there.
We'll have to have an article once it becomes certified as free cash to appropriate money from free cash to an article to be used for opioid purposes and put the money in there.
That sounds efficient.
Yeah. It's crazy. Because this, building projects, I just wanted to let you know that if you can hold the date for April 28th, it's a Friday, at 11:00. They're going to have a groundbreaking ceremony at Mansfield Ave. at the new senior center. The contractor's already setting up there. He's put out all his protection for the wetlands and getting ready to do his demo, so it's moving along. On the state aid, my net increase was $98,956 with the Governor's proposal. And we'll see if that holds, or what changes with that as we go through the process. And just on our health insurance, good news for next year, the increase is 1% for our health insurance. Our health group's in good shape and has good reserves, so 1% is all we have to go up next year, which is good.
That's incredible. Yeah, that's great. 7:15, perfect timing.
We do.
I know. And like I said, I was trying to slow down. Okay. So I will, do I open this, or do I take a motion? Take a motion, so, take a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All right. So we're opening the public hearing on the application of NEA Corporation Doing Business as Quick Stop, Manager Ektah H. Patel for a change of category from an off-premises wine and malt beverages license to an off-premises all alcohol beverages license at 250 East Main Street, Norton, Massachusetts.
Mr. Chair, excuse me. I'd like to recuse myself from this.
Okay. So Mr. Rich has had to recuse himself from this discussion. As, since we do not have a quorum, because Ms. Arts is not on the call yet, we, we do not have a quorum, so we'll have to continue this to another, to another meeting. So, so that being said, I guess we'll.
I'll move to continue, yeah.
Yeah, we'll move to motion continue.
To the specific date though, what's the date of the meeting?
The 16th?
Okay. I'll move to continue to March 16th.
Okay. Yep. Mr. Pearlman, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so are you, would you be available for March 16th?
I believe, I'm just going to grab my calendar real quick. One second. March 16th, yeah, Thursday to 16th, yes, I am.
Okay, yeah, that's the same starting time, seven, we'll do 7:15 for the public hearing on the 16th of March.
Wait, one second, one second. Yeah, I'm flying back that day. Yeah, I'll be able to do it on that day. I'll have to do it the same way, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Have a good evening.
All right. All right, we'll just keep moving through the agenda. We have a pretty light agenda tonight, so we're going to, we might end up waiting until 7:45 to have our public hearing on the other, on the other license. But next on the agenda is the Select Board's Report and Mail. I don't have anything to report. Really, the only thing I did, I had to, just generally speaking, was attended the Birmingham Building Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, just about the town, the town hall project and the new, new senior, senior community support center. And there wasn't really much that came, came out of that. Everything's moving forward. They are working with the architects and the project managers to, to look at some, some modifications to the, to the plans. But everything so far looks under budget, which is fantastic. And we're trying to keep it that way, or they're trying to keep it that way, so.
And I forgot to mention on the town hall, all the subbidders that, all the sub bids were received today, and then bids for the contractor for construction, they do the middle of March. We'll know soon how the price shakes out on the town hall, hopefully as well as it did on the senior center.
Yeah.
I want to thank you for attending that in my absence. I had a family emergency. Actually, Alec.
Alec's there too, yep, yep.
Yeah, I called both of you. Just, I wanted to make sure somebody was there for the Select Board, so I appreciate it. I, you know me, I don't like to miss meetings. I even called in on the way to the hospital when I was having the baby, so, yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, no problem at all. And then, I really don't have much else to report. Does anybody, do you guys have anything?
No, I wanted to mention the people trying to run for positions that are open.
I know, we're covering stuff too, too efficiently. Next up is the, the approval of warrants. I spoke to the Chair earlier today. She mentioned that she had already signed these warrants. Do we need to publicly accept them at this meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I believe Steve is our alternate for approving the warrants. So Steve, if you want to just announce that the warrants have been approved.
Okay. The warrants have been approved.
As posted in the.
The warrants have been, see? The warrants have been approved as posted in the agenda.
And we're out of agenda items, other than the town, other than the, the public hearing for the other license.
Let me just show you then. Let me find something. An hour. There was, I can just go over the cherry sheet with you a little bit?
Yep.
So, on the cherry sheet, just a comparison, FY23, our total receipts were listed as $17,171,790. This year, $17,421,200. The estimated charges for state and county, $1,983,503. And this year, $2,022,125. And then we have to take out school choice receiving tuition and public libraries. The school choice receiving tuition goes directly to the school department, and the public library money goes directly to the libraries, that money isn't available for appropriation. So last year, the school choice receiving tuition was $1,223,668. And this year, it's $1,329,474. So an increase of about $106,000. And the library last year was $40,451. And this year, it's $46,558, so an increase of a little over $6,000. So that's where, if you look at last year versus this year, we increased, the net is about 98, it's $98,956.
Okay. Guys have any questions on that?
Yeah. So, yeah, there is also April 7th, the Fire Department is hosting the 7th Annual Comedy Fundraiser. It's at the Clarion Hotel in Tottenham. It used to be the Holiday Inn, they just renamed it. Tickets at $20 in advance, $25 at the door. Show starts at 8:00 PM. Looking forward to that.
Go ahead, Mike.
No, I was just going to say, you could also take up the reviewer vote to approve grants and easements.
Yep, yep, we could do that. So, again, just kind of skipping around the agenda a little bit. We, so we have a reviewer vote to approve the grants and easements regarding 120 Mansfield Avenue, Norton, Massachusetts, and 70 East Main Street, Norton, Massachusetts. You want to give us a quick review of this one?
As part of both the construction projects for the town hall and the senior community center, the electric company is, has to put poles on the property to bring the wires in. And so this, by signing these two agreements, you'll be granting an easement to the phone company to be able to bring those poles in and put them on the property. From, you can see Mansfield Ave., it's a guy wire, a guy pole, and a pad. One of the things that's interesting, they're talking about some of the equipment meters and things like that, with the electric company, taking over a year now to.
Oh, yeah. Yes. I was shocked. Yeah, it's crazy. The new construction, switchgear and whatnot, it's, it's amazing. The lead time on stuff.
Yeah. I couldn't believe it when they said that. And on the town hall, they're, they'll be coming in over in the grass area between the library and the fire department, and running a pole up into the back parking lot of the town hall, roughly where the pole is now, somewhere in that area, to bring the electricity back to the new town hall.
Seems like the kind of thing we would approve, because we want to have electricity in those buildings and other utilities. All right.
So I'll motion to approve. I can do it all at once, right?
Yes.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Do we need to mention that typo, Mike?
Yeah, just so you know, I'll be having to change the first page, because it says 170 Mansfield Ave., but it's a "I" instead of 120.
So motion to approve with that correction.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed or none, so it's approved with a unanimous vote. And then we did have some old business on the agenda as well. We have continued this, I think, four times already, and unfortunately, we're, we're going to have to continue again.
It's getting close, I think.
Yeah, it's, I spoke to the Chair at EDC, and it is getting close. I think there was a little bit of a wrinkle that kind of came up in the last few days that's, that's, that's being ironed out, hopefully. So, so we're going to have to, to continue this again to the, to the next meeting. That's the, we'll review and approve of Lucky Green Ladies Host Community Agreement Amendment 1. And hopefully by the next meeting, we'll, we'll be able to dig into that and get that done. So, you guys have any objection to doing that?
Nope.
Okay. All right.
And just the Capitol Committee had their first meeting this week. Rather than have, have the Capitol Committee meet before the Finance Committee like we used to do, and you meet for an hour, and you're always rushing to get to the next one, this year we did it a little different. We decided to have one night and have everyone come and present their capital plans on one night, on a separate night from the Finance Committee, which everyone did. And then we'll be meeting again, we haven't set a second meeting yet, to review and approve the capital plan. And the Finance Committee is starting Monday night. The first meeting's going to be virtual, and then they have to make a decision at that meeting whether they're going to go virtual all the way or not. And we still don't know whether legislators are going to end this or not. So extend it to April, and I haven't heard anything on where they are as far as extending or not extending to allow you to have meetings via Zoom. And I know we did have one applicant in today for a change of premises. We've encouraged all the restaurants that have liquor licenses, that have outside seating right now. It's also grandfathered in until April, but we don't know what's going to happen, so we've encouraged them to do a change of premises, so they're not caught right when their busy season starts. If the legislature votes to end the extension, then they would be able to have the outside seating anymore. So we've encouraged them to come forward and start the process. So one has, and we'll see if some of the others do.
Right, I know we got an email from the MMA saying that it's, it's in the house now? It's in, it's in the house? Hopefully, okay. And I think that's about all we can cover.
So since we have to kill another 15 minutes, I have something that's not related to town, if I can say it.
What is it?
It's for, it's a.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
I'm on the board of the Spine and Bifid Association of Great New England, and we're looking for runners for the Fowlworth Road Race. So if anybody is a runner out there, it's a great charity, get in touch with me through Town Hall, or through Facebook, or wherever, we'd love to have you. But it's a, it's a great foundation, and I'm happy to be part of it, so. That killed about 30 seconds.
Yeah.
I was just thinking, I'm thinking more things. I was talking with Keith Silver and Joanne DiNarvio from his office about a townwide cleanup day, and unfortunately, we were looking at April 29th. It's now Election Day, so rather than have it on that day, we're looking maybe to have it on May 5th. So May 5th or 6th, it's the following Saturday.
If, if Mike was, Mike Tool is here, he'd have 100 things to talk about.
So I'll let you know if that date's confirmed, and we will do the same, I don't know if any of you have been involved in it before, but people can come the night before and, if they want, and grab bags, and let the Highway Department know which streets they're going to do. And then on the day of the cleanup, we'll set up down at the Highway Garage, and people will be commanding all the side streets that we work, and people will pick up and just leave the bags once they're full on the side of the road, and the Highway Department will go around and pick those bags up. So bags and gloves and bug spray, sunscreen available for any, water for anyone that shows up. And it's usually a pretty good day. It starts usually at 8:00 and runs till 11:00.
Great. I know that was a great event last year.
Yeah.
Just an FYI, the town, the Board of Health is hosting the Hazardous Waste Day, May 13th, Saturday, I think it's Saturday right after that townwide cleanup. So I don't have hours, but that's usually first thing in the morning till 12, 1 o'clock, if not later, if, going by past years. Let me see if I can find out. It should be right on back at the, at the Highway Department.
Norton Spring Cleanup Week, it sounds like. Do it at home, and then come out for the, or come out for the town cleanup, and then do your own home cleanup, so, yeah. Good stuff.
I suppose you have to speed through the agenda.
I know, I know.
It was going to bite us at some point.
Well, we've got 13 minutes to kill.
You can't recess now.
One other.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
Where, where are we at on the Select Board Tower Court dedication?
Yeah, I know, Michael was, was, was taking the, taking the lead on. Yeah, I know Michael was, was, was taking the, taking the lead on that, um, and, um, since he's not here, we can't, we can't get an update for him, um, but, uh, we could, we could push that to the, to the next agenda. When do we typically have to have that ready, you know, for publication and all that? Whenever?
Last week.
Yeah, yeah.
It's usually out by now because, uh, they, we usually have, we're supposed to have the books by the time we have town meetings, so.
Yes, okay.
Getting tight.
Tight, okay.
So, I don't know, get it on here. And, um, so, we all agreed on the, um, joint meeting on the fourteenth.
Okay, that, that is all set and all agreed, okay.
And I believe it's gonna be virtual, correct?
It's what it said, now is that, is that confirmed with the school committee as well as FinCon members?
I, the date is.
Yeah.
And, uh, I know the FinCon was reaching out today, so I'm not sure, um, about the FinCon schools, I think, while, so.
I think I did see it is gonna be, uh, virtual, so.
Yeah, okay. I might be better with, with all those people.
With that many people.
Yeah, yeah.
That's nice. It'd be more difficult with all those people in town.
That's true, that's true. It's, it's, it's most difficult if it's hybrid.
Yeah.
Right, so it's like, pick one or the other, I, I feel like is the best way to do it, but, um, and, uh, and that's, and that, that's the meeting to discuss the, uh, the training project.
Correct.
Okay, 'cause I know, I know there's been some questions out there in the, in the community about that, so.
I'm glad we were able to get a date together with all three boards.
Saying some information today, I'm just hoping that someone from Train can be there to give us an update on the cash flow, when it was, uh, presented, we had that cash flow projection that I sent you today, just want updates from Train, all right, where are we, and where do we go from here, so we know.
Okay.
And, uh, we did get, uh, notice today from Congressman Oshin Klos's office, um, that we have to let him know by the eighth, any projects we have that we want funding on.
Yeah, and we have to fill us a form directly on his website, and we can alter it, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for, uh, all that time, and, uh, so I know the water department was thinking of a hundred million dollar, they had a hundred million dollar water project on the capital that they pulled off because they said they didn't have, it wouldn't fit into the, uh, funding that they had available, so I, I talked to Frank today, so we might as well put that in and see, uh.
Sure.
What happens.
And that's for federal and state?
Federal.
Just federal, right?
Just federal.
Sorry, federal, federal money, okay. All right? All right, guys, we're doing good, we have nine more minutes to kill.
One more, uh.
Go ahead, Alec.
With the list of positions still available, I don't think we mentioned Housing Authority, there's still one, one five-year seat available for that as well.
Yeah.
Along with the others.
For that.
But we can mention them all again, because we have.
Yeah, we don't have anything else to do.
Yep, so we have a one-three-year term of Select Board, one, one-year term of Board of Assessors, one three-year term of Board of Assessors, one five-year term of Housing Authority, one two-year term of Planning Board, two three-year terms Planning Board, one three-year term of Moderator, one three-year term School Committee, and one three-year term Water Civil Commission.
There are still plenty of those seats that people haven't even put papers on yet, so there's.
Yeah.
There's desperate need in this town. All right, you want to go through them again?
I tried to read them slow.
I know.
I did have a meeting yesterday down at, uh, they don't call it Camp Finnberg anymore, they wanna call it Norton Outdoor Center, they believe. Brother Y, and, uh, they were talking about ways that they can let, uh, people in Norton know more about, uh, what, what's available there, and, uh, you know, while the gates open, they said they encourage people to come on in and, uh, check out the facility, and, um, I know that, uh, the principal of the Solmane School is there, and I guess they do have failed trips, they bring the kids over there, so, um, we, a couple of things we mentioned to them that, um, that came up about last year, some incident happened, and they didn't know about it at the camp in town, and, uh, so, we told them how to sign up for Norton Alerts, so that they, the councils will all have it on their cell phone, so if something happens in the area, they'll know about it, um, and also, the director of the camp, we asked her to reach out to the rec director and see if there's anything that they can work on together, and, uh, and also, there's not a link, I, I said, like, if you go on our website, there's a link to the Tri-Town Chamber of Commerce, so I said you might want to see about, um, linking your homepage with a, on our website, so if you'd like to do that, we will work on that.
Excellent. My kids have both gone to Finnberg for the summer program, and, um, my son will probably be going back this year, and, and we love it, they, they do a great job there, so, so I encourage everybody to, to look into that.
One of the things that, thinking about, they haven't done it yet, but, um, in Alaburu, every second grader gets swim lessons at the pool.
Really?
And, um, so, it's a logistic thing, because you have to bus them, um, especially if we did it with our second graders, we'd have to bus them down to Alaburu, uh, because it's the indoor pool where they do it, uh, but they were saying that it was interesting that, they, that's the perfect time, they said, because that's when the kids are getting more adventurous, and, um, so it's a good time to teach the kids how to swim, and then they said it was interesting because a lot of the parents then say, I don't know how to swim, can you, can you teach me how to swim?
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, Paul Schleko was saying it's, uh, it's one of the most important things, because there's nothing worse than when you have to go to a tragedy, and, yeah, someone.
I love that idea, that's, that's a fantastic idea, yeah.
Yeah, and they, um, for the, for the outdoor, for the summer program, because they have a, they have an outdoor pool there, um, I'm pretty sure all, and, you know, I don't want to speak for the Y, but they all, all the, um, kids there get, um, get pool time, they get free pool time, but then they actually do lessons as well, so, you know, it's, it's a nice sort of added benefit of, of going there, or have your kids go in there in the summers, they're essentially getting, every day they're there, they're getting, um, they're getting swim lessons, um, and that, that continues through, through all ages, um, so, um, so that's another, another benefit of that, of that place, it's got, they've got a nice, large pool there, so, it's great.
And speaking of swim lessons, if you know any, uh, high school age students that would like to be lifeguards, this is the time of year when we'll be looking for lifeguards for the pool, so, um, if you know anyone that you think might be interested, encourage them to, uh, reach out to the rec director, um, not sure what the salary is, but, pretty good, you know, pretty good paying down it.
Sure.
Can't keep up with what the state is offering, but, uh, in assignment bonuses, they're doing, but, uh, it's a good opportunity, and, uh, usually it's a good group of kids that get involved, and, uh, it's a good summer job.
Do you happen to know what the minimum age is?
Um, sixteen.
Okay. Great.
Obviously, they have to go through training.
Right, they have to be certified as a lifeguard, and, uh, we'll pay for that for them, uh, if they agree to stay on for the summer.
See, that's worth everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's all informative to me.
We are burning through some great information. Alec, looks like he has something else.
What about the, the CPR classes, what were those dates that were being offered? I don't recall the date.
Yeah, it was at the, uh, fire department.
Yeah. I think they had to add a date, didn't they?
I know the honorary mayor signed up.
Did they run out of spots, like, right?
I thought I saw that they ran a, they had to add another date, yeah.
I remember they said they'd, they'd add more dates if the demand was, yeah, that high.
See if I can find it before Mike.
I know, I don't have it. Are you working on their website, Kevin?
Yeah, I think they had it on their, um, on their Facebook page.
I thought it was on their Instagram.
Get the comedy, uh, comedy show.
Yeah.
Out there.
Riveting TV tonight, guys. Uh, going back to the voting, it's, if you can't make the, what is the date of the election? April?
April twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, if you can't make that.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, if you can't make that, definitely go down to Town Hall and, and absentee vote, it's very easy, my daughter did it, um, she's been out of town, so she did it for the last election, um, quick and easy, doesn't take too much time.
So, they had the first one on February twenty-first, did you get, did you guys get that?
No, I was gonna tell you, they're starting home inspections, uh, on Monday, June fifteen, twenty twenty.
Oh, oh, that's a little outdated, yeah, yeah.
I guess that one's too late.
It doesn't look like it's been updated, but we can, um, we can, we can look into that, it's just, it's just still referencing the twenty-first, but, um, we can, we can reach out and find out if they, if they have updated, but.
Seven forty-five?
Seven forty-five.
Too much, much.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I, I was thinking that, all right, so, um, uh, I will, uh, take a motion to open the public hearing, um, for the, uh, application for a transfer of off-premises wines and malt beverages license at sixty-two Mansfield Avenue, Northern Mass, from J. Laxby Corp., doing business as Ma, Mass Gas Manager Jack M. Patel, to SPGRS Corp., doing business as Mass Gas Manager, Sarika Patel, same address, the proposed licensee will also be requesting the approval of the pledge of inventory and pledge of license.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, I declare the public hearing is open. All right. Is anybody online that would like to speak? I don't see anybody. No, there's no, I don't think there's anyone here. This just looks like a, is this just a transfer in the family?
Yes.
Is that, is that what that is? Okay. Yeah, so I'll take, take a motion to, uh, to approve, you guys want to take a second or just, that, that's cool?
Yeah, I'll, I've, I've looked through it before, and, um, a second. Yeah, motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All right, um, so, uh, Mr. Horns, will you make the motion, uh, Mr. Rich, uh, the second? Does this say roll call?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, we'll do a roll call vote, Alec?
Yes.
Steve?
Aye.
And aye, too, am a yes, uh, it passes unanimously, um, for the, uh, transfer of the, uh, of the license as listed in the agenda, uh, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Roll call again, roll call vote, Alec?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Aye, too, am a yes, uh, the public hearing is closed, um, and I'm pretty sure we don't have anything else, other than the, uh, the next meeting's agenda, uh, the next meeting will be Thursday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, um, and, um, that's all we got.
So, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned.